Bien. Debo decirle buenas tardes a todos. Y estoy muy impresionada de que haya un par de personas que se unan a este panel. Está a la media de las siete horas, ha pasado un día largo y es una de las conversaciones más difíciles y temas que también vamos a discutir. Y es la economía y preguntas en todos los espacios. Esta sesión fue diseñada sin el sistema de balones, pero porque pensé que tiene preguntas en todos los espacios. De nuevo, ustedes fueron fantásticos en participar en los otros paneles. Esta es la oportunidad de hablar directamente con nuestros invitados esta noche, hablando de la economía y planteando sus preguntas en su mente. Por supuesto, en este momento, hablando de la economía en general, creo que todos tienen problemas para pasar por el mensaje. Hay tantos mensajes que piensan, está esto de noticias o está esto de ruido? Y en este momento piensan, ¿es esto de noticias o es esto de ruido? En realidad piensan, ¿es esto creíble? Y pierden confianza. Así que lo que estamos viendo en este momento es exactamente esa expresión, una pérdida de confianza y los mercados, especialmente los mercados financieros, están reaccionando a la inseguridad en eso. Así que, lo que digan las personas tratando de restablecer esta confianza en los mercados, en la gente, en la dirección en general, en este momento no parece que esté funcionando. Ángel Gure, él es el secretario general de la OCDE, Organización de cooperación económica y desarrollo. Buenas tardes a ustedes. Él nos está uniendo esta noche para hablar sobre la economía y decirnos qué está pasando a lo que le preocupa. Y como dije, la gran oportunidad es tener acceso directo a él y hacer las preguntas en su mente y ver qué va a decir sobre la economía en general, porque él tiene acceso directo a nuestros políticos, a nuestros gobiernos. La OCDE es parte del G20 y los políticos van a personas importantes y construidores de opiniones como Ángel para básicamente pedir consejos, qué está pasando y cómo comunicarse. Ángel, bueno verte. Muchas gracias por unirse a nosotros. Un aplauso.
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias.
Bien, es interesante. Just now there was a WEF, World Economic Forum, in Abu Dhabi, and I was so flabbergasted about the communication coming out of there. And there was even Gordon Brown making a comment saying that we need global cooperation, which is even more necessary to avoid a new avoidable global downturn. I thought we were in a full-blown crisis. I mean, where have I been living? How do you see it?
There is a slowdown of the recovery. You know, by the end of last year, we were pretty optimistic. It was looking good. The main economic locomotives of the world were growing faster, and that slowed down. And after the second quarter of this year, we started to see some flat numbers. Our projections for the rest of the year look like we are going to be in very, very flat terrain or even some negative patches. Now, there's also two or three other legacies that suggest that we're not out of the crisis, but that this is simply another phase of the crisis. We had a financial crisis, we had an economic paralysis, now we have this enormous unemployment challenge, particularly unemployment among the young, long-term unemployment for the first time ever. So what are the legacies? Low growth, we're still struggling to find traction to grow faster, high unemployment, long-term and focused on the youth mostly, very high deficits for the year, sometimes very close to double-digit deficits in the United States, in the UK, in some other countries, and very high accumulated debt. In the last three years of the crisis, we've accumulated on average only in the OECD about 30 points of GDP. So now we are about 100% debt to GDP.
Yes, absolutely.
Now our debts are as much as the wealth that we produce in one year.
Let's stay with that theme. Let's stay with that theme, because my question, of course, is a sovereign debt crisis. You mentioned it at the last, but I think this is the most prominent issue right now that everybody is grappling with. Let's stay here in the eurozone, first of all. I mean, are we going to go into a great depression? We have even George Soros writing in the FT in a letter and 95 others also signing, saying that if governments, if politicians don't move right now to get us out of what we're seeing, he actually thinks that there's going to be another great depression. Do you believe that?
No, we're not going to go into another great depression, but we run the risk of actually stopping the recovery. And as I said, we have the wherewithal, we have the firepower, and we should have the political capacity to increase the cooperation among countries there. I would fully agree with Gordon in terms of the need for a political cooperation on economic policy. And the one thing we got to address are, in the very short term, two issues. One is the debt you mentioned, the debt, particularly Greece, that's like where the contagion is coming from. And actually, it's, you know, only 2% of the world's GDP, of the region's GDP, of the EU's GDP. Then why is it causing so much problem? Why is it having an impact all over Europe, all over? Well, because we in the beginning did what I call the original sin, which is we said, whatever happens to Greece is the fate of Europe, is the fate of the Euro. Therefore, we should not allow anything to happen to Greece. Well, the problem is, Greece was an over indebted country with a bunch of creditors who had overlent to Greece. And they should have been ring fenced to agree among themselves what they could do to solve the problem, but we hooked the cart of Greece, which had that problem, to the rest of the world, in fact. And we are suffering those consequences. Now, we can still do something about it. The problem of Ireland, for example, is a problem of the banking system, and it's looking much better now. The problem of Portugal is more traditional IMF type. Now, let me say the other problem, banks. The banks. If we don't fix the banks, of course, they will not lend and they will not help the recovery. But at the same time, imagine that instead of helping, the government is having to put, to get their hands in their pockets and ask the taxpayers to provide resources to help the banks. Now, this is not to help the banks, but it's to help the banking system going, to help the deposits going. But effectively, we now have these two problems, and they have to be addressed in parallel. This is affecting the capacity for recovery in the very short term. There are other medium and long-term issues that we have to address. Maybe we can go to that a little later.
A little later on. But let's quickly stay with Greece. And of course, you were saying it is a small economy, fair enough, however, it is part of the eurozone. And that means it really touched at the heart of the problem of the eurozone, that everybody is happy as long as everything is growing and growing nicely, but as soon as somebody gets into trouble, nobody really wants to be part of perhaps the solution of it.
Yes.
Exactly. And we're talking, just let me just finish that question. We're just talking right now even about the problems of the stability and growth pact, Ángel. At some point, of course, the whole thing needs to be rewritten. So what do you think are the major loopholes that were done wrong right from the onset of creating the European Union to get us here?
The problem is pretty straightforward, if you think about it. What happened is suddenly we found that one country had a big problem, and then said, well, what do we do? Well, let's go and support it, let's go and help it. And we found out that the new constitution not only did not foresee the case of a country going under, it actually forbid specifically that we should bail out a particular country. So you had to go to an exceptionality clause. And how many times can you justify actions and policy by saying, this is an exceptional circumstance?
You have to change the structure. Sure.
You run out of excuses. So they had to change the constitution, they had to change the laws of, and now this is why all these countries are having to confirm the fact that they can all now come in the support of Greece and increase the package. Now, what is the logic, as I said, of saying, whatever happens to Greece, happens to Europe and happens to the Euro? Not very great, if you look at it, because this was, it is a country that uses the same currency as 17 others, but it doesn't mean that if one country does something wrong, all the others have to suffer the fate. Now, going forward, we've learned a lesson, yes. What are the solutions? Build a fantastic safety net, as strong a safety net as you can. Everybody underwrites a safety net, everybody is going to contribute to the safety net, and then make sure you never have to use a safety net. By having what I would call the facto of fiscal union, that means the discipline should be enforced by everybody on all the rest, and to say, listen, I'm underwriting 25% of the safety net. If something goes wrong with you, I'm going to have to pay 10%. I'm going to have to pay 7% of damages. Therefore, please make sure that you don't cause any damages, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
And that is the logic that is now being asked by people like Angela Merkel or people like Mr. Sarkozy or the other members of not only the political leaders, but also members of parliament. They're saying, please, I'm willing to help, but I need assurances.
Yes, absolutely.
That this is going to have some sort of discipline, some sort of control.
Yeah, and they need to write that into the constitution, because the entire debate about bailing out or not bailing out, of course, people were saying, you are rewarding bad behavior, and then once you bail them out once, then you will have to bail them out twice. So I guess the change needs to be in some way. Yes, bail them out, tell them it's once, change the structure underneath so it won't happen again, and they can't be bailed out anymore, but cater for it going forward. Ángel, we have lots of questions for you here, so thank you very much for the participants. And I will start, you know, putting them to you. So we might be jumping a little bit in different issues as they come in. I will take you through them. So with regards to the eurozone, how realistic is an ever enlarging eurozone? Has it outgrown its optimum geographic scope to be sustainable? Very valid question considering about what happened just in Slovakia at the ESFS vote.
Well, the limit is, of course, Europe. You can't get a eurozone that is bigger than Europe, although some countries may try. The Euro area, meaning the countries that use the Euro as a currency rather than Europe, you know, Euroland, which is the whole of Europa, which is the largest trading block in the world, and the 17 countries, there are going to be more countries asking to join the Euro. Some may be a little, you know, right now thinking twice because of what's going on with the volatility, but in general, I would say, especially for smaller countries, the ones that are still left out, what happens is, it is good to be under a big umbrella. The transactional costs are reduced. And although you could say that if you have a common currency with a common central bank in Frankfurt rather than in your own country, you lose flexibility, I think the benefits of being a part of this is important. Second, it's moving towards a single market. This is the logic of Europe, and therefore having a single currency makes sense, just like the French and the Germans are now talking how to have more or less homogeneous taxing systems. Well, it makes a lot of sense, they're neighbors, and they should not be doing better than neighbor type of in order to see who attracts the investments, because I have lower taxes than you. So this is moving more and more into more of a European. The problem is very simple. The markets are global, and the authority is still national, is still fragmented. There is a dissonance, there is an asymmetry between these two problems. The problems are becoming more and more world problems, and the authority lies with the national authorities of always. So this is why you're creating regulators that cover the whole of the area, you're creating elements of consensus or coordination so that you can match global problems, global authorities, or at least better warning systems.
Better warning systems. I think what you kind of didn't mention is the actual loss of sovereignty on a national level, which is exactly what is the problem of getting more than just a monetary policy.
Frankly, this is a discussion that is over in Europe a long time ago. What do you think that they decided when they said the tariffs are only going to be set in Brussels? What do you think about protectionism is only going to be fought in Brussels? Mergers are going to be discussed in Brussels? It's a long time that the government said, I am better off, because on these and these and these areas, I am yielding the sovereignty to the European Commission, the European Union. But that's something which the Europeans advanced on a long time ago, and I think it's the way to go, I have to say.
Yeah, absolutely. I do agree with you. It is the way to go, but I think the more the issues become national, for example, when you have to go into retirement, it is so differences. Also, one of the reasons why we do have such big imbalances even within the eurozone. Moving on to the next question here. How to promote investment and research and development in the OECD? They jumped countries. For environment when social concern is on the top of the agenda. Did you get that?
No, we are looking at the questions of the environment more than ever. This is the green growth strategy. We just put it out. We're looking at the green growth strategy and promoting the green growth strategy with all our members and many non-members, and we're looking at, this is part of the innovation strategy, which we just put out also. So it's a bad excuse to say that because you have a financial crisis or a banking crisis, or because I have a crisis with Greece, you should not think about the medium and the long term, or the question of the role of women in development, one of the most underutilized economic assets in the world, women, you know, with all the talent and all the installed capacity that there is that we cannot utilize it for a bunch of reasons. The young people, jobs for the youth, today, the great tragedy of 10, 20, 40, 45% unemployment of the youth in general, unemployment, we just produced the employment outlook, where you have even in the richest countries of the world, 10, 20% unemployment. These are the great, these are the great challenges, and inequality. The crisis is making inequality even greater. So we are going to be even more unequal, and I'm talking here even in the richest countries of the world. So don't let the crisis be used as an excuse to think medium and long term. The challenges are still there. There is life after debt.
We love that. Let's hope so.
And after we solve the crisis of the debt and the Greece, and we will, we have to deal with the medium and the long term, and we have to get growth back, we have to get the jobs back. These are the medium and long-term challenges. We have to be able to answer the question, how's life, you know, and measure well-being in a different way so that we really go and answer about the satisfaction, the level, if you will, of happiness of the people. We are going to have an after crisis, I can assure you, and we have to prepare for it.
Absolutely. Let's get us first through this crisis, Ángel, before we kind of consider the after crisis. But I think with the jobs is something really interesting. We must not give up on the underlying issues that have been there for a long time. But we heard today in the business panel earlier on from Bain that there's going to be a jobless recovery. There is going to be a recovery, but a jobless recovery, especially in the US. And if this job creation bill that Obama was putting forward, of course, is not getting anywhere because simply the state may not be able to afford it. So how can you continue to balance exactly that, that you need to have jobs at the end of the day, which you need to create, but that literally costs money?
Creating jobs today is not only morally and ethically imperative, but it is also economically fundamental, because it is going to produce greater demand, it's going to also help with the inequality issue. And there are many ways in which you can. You have to have better public employment services, you have to have, you can do tax incentives, you can create incentives in the companies and say, for, you know, for every new job that we create, we'll give you a tax break, like the Obama package that says...
But how do you get your debt down if you get a tax break?
$4,000 for new jobs, for people who have been unemployed for longer periods, et cetera. Now, you are saying the Obama project is being discussed and maybe in the Senate not having a very, not faring very well. Let me tell you something. The Obama package was one of the most exciting things that have happened, because everybody was only talking about what you call fiscal consolidation. I know you're not all economic experts, but let's say, that's jargon for saying slash the deficits, okay? Cut the deficits, therefore, cut the growth maybe. And in that context, suddenly Obama comes up and says, yes, we're going to cut the deficit, we got 10 years here, and we're going to go along this path to cut the deficit. But in the meantime, the greatest single, the single most important challenge is jobs. And what he did was put forward this proposal worth 3% of GDP, which you would say, well, this makes it more difficult in the short term. Yes, it does, but it's in the context of a 10-year, a 10-year plan. And what it does is deal with the needs of today to make sure that it is possible to continue with a medium and a long-term program. And I have to say that I hope that at least the largest parts of this program of Mr. Obama can actually be approved. It's also a very good example of the balance. You need to balance the recovery, don't kill the recovery, maintain the recovery, and at the same time give signals that you're worried about the deficits and the debt, and that you have a plan to deal with it, while at the same time dealing with the jobs creation and dealing with those that are the victims of the crisis. There are hundreds of millions of people unemployed, but the problem is, there are tens of millions more than there were before the crisis. The crisis has created massive unemployment, not only in the richest countries in the world, but also in the developing world.
Of course, and I think what is very important also perhaps to mention, you might agree, Ángel, is to say, okay, all these debts and deficits have been accumulated over years, and we can't just go from one day to the next not having them. So it needs to be balanced whilst you're trying to put that debt down, you still need to see and stimulate an economy. Something that you were saying, for example, the ECB is not doing enough. Let me quickly ask you about their behavior. I've seen many comments from you, Ángel, where you criticize quite openly the behavior of the European Central Bank in the way they were handling the crisis. You just don't think they're stimulating, you think in the short term, they should definitely expand, i.e. give money into the markets and then consolidate later on. Are you still standing by that?
First of all, let me clarify. I think the European Central Bank had done an extraordinary job in keeping the financial system of Europe afloat, because there was a funding problem. The interbank market, which means that the loans that the banks lend to each other when they have excess liquidity, dried up completely. So the only way to go, the only place to go was the European Central Bank. They've been keeping the Greek banks afloat, they've been keeping many Spanish banks, many Italian banks afloat, et cetera. And that is admirable. They've done a great job. The only question is, only a few weeks ago, they increased interest rates at a time when most of us were more worried about growth and the recovery than we were about inflation. And we don't think inflation today should take a lot of our sleep. We think we should focus on the growth and the recovery. And so I recommend that perhaps next time around, which was last week, the European Central Bank should reduce interest rates. The decision by the European Central Bank was to keep rates as they are, but continue to fund the banks, which is a positive thing. So maybe Mr. Draghi, who is the ex-president of the European Central Bank, will reduce rates next time. Mr. King, who is the governor of the Central Bank of the United Kingdom, he also said, we're going to go buy debt in the markets so that interest rates will go down, and this will help. Mr. Bernanke did this in the past with his so-called QE2, and he said, we'll do whatever it takes. So central banks are helping. The only question is, central banks cannot do everything. There's also ministries of finance, expenditure programs. We're all trying to tighten our belt, but you don't tighten it so much that you stop circulation, you know, in the body. And at the same time, you're saying, don't cut those parts that are the seed of the future growth. Education, innovation, research and development, and of course, protect the vulnerable. Protect those that now have been unemployed more than six months, more than a year, in some cases, two years. Train the ones that will need retraining in order to get jobs. Maintain the ones that are in jobs, even if precariously, and train them in the job, because it's more expensive to maintain the unemployment and then get them back on the jobs like the Germans are doing. The Germans now have less unemployment than before the crisis. There are several countries which are doing very well in terms of employment. Turkey is doing quite well, Brazil, Mexico is doing quite well, Austria is doing quite well, Belgium is doing well. So it means policies count. It doesn't necessarily have to be that we have to have unemployment, because they did the right things and they did them at the right time.
Okay, let me move you on to debt. I think this is something that quite a few people are communicating in about. There's one, why is it always jumping when I'm trying to push it? Let me just see where it is. Basically, it says, what is wrong with default? Where is it gone? I do apologize for that, I can't find it anymore. Anyway, the tonus...
I can answer that question.
Yeah, the tonus of the question, why don't we just let something default?
What is wrong with default?
Exactly. Let's just default and then restart and reset the system.
Let me tell you, I am a warrior, I'm a veteran of the Latin American debt wars. This is why I can assure you that there is life after debt. The question is, what happens when you have borrowed too much and you can't pay? Well, you go into a chapter 11 or whatever, you know, the people go into a chapter 11, companies go into a chapter 11, well, countries go into a chapter 11. The fact that they are part of the Euro or not part of the Euro, frankly, should not be an element that would stop from the objective treatment of an over indebted country. What is the problem today with Greece? Why would a Greece that does not have an enormous reduction in its debt will not be credible? Because the burden of the debt is so great on the shoulders of the Greek economy and the Greek taxpayers and the Greek government and the Greek people, that even if they perform admirably for the next 25 years, if there isn't a very big write-down of the debt today, they're only going to be working to pay the debt. And obviously, that is politically unsustainable.
Sure.
And the taxpayers of Europe are going to be reaching in their pockets again and again in order to not help Greece grow back, which is absolutely legitimate, but also to pay Greece's creditors, when the creditors themselves should be making a contribution by saying, listen, you know, we overlent to this country. In fact, some of them were actually inventing ways in which it wouldn't even count as official debt in order to be able to do more operations, more business. Well, there should be a consequence. If somebody lent you too much money and they didn't ascertain your capacity to lend, there should be a consequence to that.
So they were reckless on their side, so...
Well, Greece is paying a very expensive price for their fiscal sins and excesses, because the program is very tough. They can do better, yes, but at the same time, the private sector creditors have to contribute more, because otherwise, the only other ones who are going to come in and pay for it are the taxpayers of Europe. And the taxpayers of Europe, as I said, they should be helping Greece in order to get back on the growth path.
They should actually help growing.
Not to pay its creditors.
I think it's interesting, because of course, the whole issue is called haircut. I'm sure you're familiar with that, that creditors need to take haircut on whatever they lend, i.e. they will get less money back than they were putting in.
It's a discount.
It's a discount. So even though, you know, you only, we're talking about 21%, haircut, now we're talking about 50%, perhaps 60%. So the private sector will be basically involved in helping that issue. But going forward, I mean, where are we going? We are seeing in the markets for the last four or five trading session, ever since we heard about bank recapitalization, possibility or openness from the European governments, that is helping the market sentiment. People say, okay, good, banks are going to take the haircut, but the government yet again is stepping in, and if there needs to be, you know, capital at the banks and they can't raise it from the financial markets, we'll be stepping in. The market likes that. But how credible is that, Ángel? I mean, look at the balance sheet, we're just talking about how indebted the money is. My question is, where does the money come from?
Yeah, well, let me, first of all, again, for the purpose of a public that may not be very experienced in these matters, because they are enormously complicated, when you get into the jargon, one tends to get lost. There are two different issues, okay? The governments have overborrowed in general. They have too much debt. And why? Because they used debt, meaning public expenses, to get out of the hole that was created by the crisis, 2008, 2009, 2010. They overspent, and some of the countries already had a big deficit anyway. Some of the countries were better prepared to spend more without incurring into an enormous problem. But now, they find themselves with a huge amount of debt. They have to bring it down, and they have to work it through, they have to digest it, you know? These things have to be like an Alka Seltzer. You need to digest the debt that you... You need to digest the debt that you've accumulated over time. Now, this is the problem of the accumulated debt of practically every single country. And it includes the United States. It includes most of the countries in Europe. It includes Japan. It includes, you know, so practically every country. Now, the problem of the banks. The banks are the ones who lent money to the countries, are the ones who lent money and over- lent. But also, they lent money to the people who were buying homes. They lent money to the people who wanted a house.
Making money.
And they very aggressively lent money. In fact, they were pushing the mortgages down. You know, in our ears, when you went to the supermarket, you could get a mortgage simply by signing a piece of paper. 100% of, you don't have to put any money down, you know? Just sign here, you got a new house, you know? And of course, when interest rates went up or when people were without a job, then of course, you are having the massive failure. Now, the problem is the banks, first of all, are affected by no growth. They're affected by bad loans. And they're affected, very importantly, by having lent to the countries that now have debt trouble. So this is where you get the two problems converging. And this is where, when you solve the problem of the debt by saying, we will not pay to the banks, then you have another problem with the banks. And the governments have to make sure that the banks don't go under. But that is the way it is. That means you need to capitalize the banks to give confidence
Sure.
that the banking system in your country is stable and strong
and liquidity is there.
and is going to continue to do its role. Second, you need to stabilize the debt issue. In particular, ring-fence the question of Greece to isolate it, deal with it so that it doesn't exert a contagion. Because this contagion is like Ebola, you know? Once, it spreads so fast, once you realize you've got it, you've got to cut your leg off in order to survive.
Not good.
You don't want this to be spread out. The virus should be kept in there. You don't want the problem of the virus of the debt issue to spread to other countries in Europe or to other countries in the world. It's already caused enough problems.
Yeah. Angel, we are already almost out of time. So let me quickly ask you one last question. And I wonder, and I think quite a few people would like to know as well. Looking at the current situation where we are in